All right, I think we're ready. I hear my bird chirping, which tells me it's seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to Roxbury Land Wetlands and Water Course Commission for November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, another year. Uh, seating of members, Rob, you want to start?
Rob Horegon.
Kathy Ross.
Melanie Jellin. Oh, sorry, Kathy, you go.
Sorry, Kathy Ross.
Melanie Jellin.
Is that it?
Let me do a real quick. Um, I've got, hold on, I've got two more in the waiting room. I've got Sierra and John joining.
Okay. Let them in.
Um, and I know Sue, I spoke to her today, so she said she'd be here.
Sierra's there, looks like she's out in the cold. John's here.
Um, I, yes, he's signed in. I don't know if he stepped away for a moment. He's not on camera.
You got unmute.
Yeah, there he is.
I'm here, Russ.
All right. And Sierra, would you sign in? Would you just state you're here? Could you unmute?
Sierra, Gorglio, and I'm here.
Okay. But Sue's not here, so I will.
Sue is not here.
Right, so I will see Kathy for Sue.
Okay.
All right, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from October twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah, by the way, I'm here, I just had problems with my audio here, but.
That's no problem.
Yeah.
So do I hear anything on the minutes? No comments? Look for a motion approved?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Ah.
All right. Hi.
Hi.
All right, we'll move on to whole business, Wayne and Margaret Care, ninety-six Hemlock Road. Um, there was some tree cutting going on there, John Cody told him to stop submitting an application. Um, they did, it's for a house, and they asked if they could continue to cut dead trees. And they were told by me they could, because it wasn't in a regulated area. Um, so Rob, you did a site walk on this today?
I did it.
This application is for the house, the septic, um, and they did some tree clearing. This is on Hemlock Road, it backs up to the cemetery area where there's all those wetlands in between the cemetery and Hemlock Road. So go ahead, Rob.
Uh, yes, I walked it yesterday, um, and let's say, there's a, first of all, there's been a lot of activity on this property for the tree clearing, grubbing. Um, and when I first got there, um, there's a pile of trees, you know, not large trees, but maybe anywhere from, you know, saplings to ten-inch trees that are piled up north to south on this property, just about where the house site is, I would believe, or just past, uh, just to the wetland side of the house site. There's also, as you go down towards the wetlands on the south side of the property, perpendicular to Hemlock Road, is another large area of tree stumps and tree deposits that actually go right against the wetlands on the south, kind of the south, uh, east side of the property. So there's been a lot of activity within the, um, regulated area. And I do have to say that this wetland that is on this property, um, is a very significant wetland. So much so that in, I think, nineteen ninety-six, the Roxbury Wetlands Commission denied an application by the Roxbury Cemetery Association across this wetlands.
Ah.
It does, it does act, I believe, as kind of a filtration system for the downtown of Roxbury, you know, triple R development, the town garage, um, as that water makes its way to the Shippag River. So I think this wetland really, really needs to be treated with, um, the utmost respect.
Okay. Brian, are you here for the applicant?
Russ, I'm here.
Thank you.
What you're looking at right now is a revised plan. Um, the original plan had a detached garage. So the owners have decided to get rid of the detached garage, actually move the house closer to the road. So this plan reflects a, uh, development proposal. For all the major development is outside the upland review area. On the previous application, the house was closer to the upland review area. And the roof drainage system was actually in the, the, um, hundred-foot sat back area. At this point, everything's been pulled back, um, away from wetlands. So all the major construction proposed is actually outside the regulated area. Um, I know that there has been some tree cutting on the property in the past, which, uh, when the owners were notified to stop, they, they did stop all work. So, uh, this is a revised plan with a lesser development scheme. Uh, was a pretty good-sized detached garage, it's been removed. So this is a much more compact proposal for construction.
Okay. Anybody on the commission have any questions for Brian?
I, Brian, I, I do, um, I, have you been out to the site since all this clearing's been done?
Yeah, I was notified by the owners, uh, as soon as they stopped cutting, which was actually a couple of months ago.
Um, did you, did you, it's hard to get past that winrow of trees and debris, but I walked around it, you know, and got covered in ticks, by the way. Um, I walked around it down to that wetland on the, kind of the south, southeast side of the property. And there's a lot of, uh, tree and stump debris that's been pushed right up against that wetland?
Yeah, I, I didn't walk down to that area, I met with the owners who was in the, basically, the cleared area near the road. So I actually didn't walk down in that area, but I'm sure the owners would be willing to, to move that stuff out of regulated area. Um, you know, based upon the, uh, the proposed development site, uh, there's no proposed development down in that area close to wetlands.
I, I think.
I'm sure they would be willing to move that stuff out of regulated area and, and restore that area.
I, I think it's all machine work, it's not like just, you know, hand, you know, carry, dragging logs up, I mean, it's.
Right, you probably have to get a machine in there to pull that, the, the stuff that's there, deposited close to wetlands, you'd have to get an excavator in there with a, with a, uh, thumb on it to pull the material out and get it out of regulated area.
And, and then what, what do you think, you know, the area up, I, I'll call it, you know, the house site and the wetland side of the house site, all the trees had been removed, you know, it's pretty much all pine straw, so there's no vegetation. Um, and all of that is sloped towards the wetland. So it just seemed to me that there was, you know, evidence of, you know, minor, um, erosion heading towards the wetlands.
Well, the, the proposal is to have, uh, silt fence barrier down gradient of all the construction area, which hasn't been stalled at this point, but would be the first step in terms of doing any construction on site, or any remediation, for that matter. So the, the silt fence is shown on the down gradient side of the, of the development area to wrap around that, uh, of the, uh, septic area and roof drainage, um, dry well area.
My, my initial opinion was I was a little bit in shock as to the amount of activity that had been done there, going on there in close, close proximity to the wetland. And my question would be to the, to the applicant is how are they going to protect this wetland and make sure that it's protected now during construction and, and in the future?
Well, if it's now, Rob.
Well, um, in, in terms of, in terms of protection, I've, I've got silt fence barrier shown on the down gradient side of the construction area, which is a pretty standard, um, installation. The house site area itself is kind of a gently sloping, uh, area, it's not exactly steep, although as you go down towards the wetlands, it does get steeper. So there is a, a line of silt fence all the way along the down gradient side of the construction area. Um, so I mean, that.
I think what he's saying is right now the site's been disturbed, right, Rob?
Yes.
And there's no erosion control in now.
Correct.
Probably another week left to where you could call an erosion control company and have them come in and put in hay bales or you could do it yourself, but pretty soon the ground's gonna freeze. And, uh, what Rob's telling us is it's, it's not stable, that stuff needs to be taken out of there as soon as possible, out of the buffer zone, and then, uh, erosion control hay bales or silt fence put up, uh, along the wetland where all that stuff's been sitting, so there's no vegetation there, uh, to protect it until, until spring comes and stuff comes up. Right, Rob?
Well, I, yeah, certainly possible, I mean, um, you know, in terms of doing the, the removal of that material, silt fence could be installed down gradient of the area where it's piled up, um, then the material moved out of that area. Um, and the silt fence left in place.
I think that's what really needs to be done, especially if they're gonna have a track machine that's gonna be going back and forth, dragging all that debris uphill, you know, creating ruts, and I, I, I think there really needs to be a barrier between that wetland and what they've disturbed.
Okay.
Did, would it be better to wait until the ground freezes to go in there and start pulling stuff out?
Yeah, they could put the erosion control in right away.
Yeah.
And then wait till it's frozen, you're right, John, that's the best way to do it, is wait. And then when it freezes up, get that stuff out of there.
I think the owners would be willing to put in the, the silt fence. I could go take a look at it, call the office when that's installed, so you can come and take a look.
All right, yeah, John, John Cody could approve it once it's up. And then as soon as it's possible with the ground frozen, get a machine in there and pull it all out.
I have a question.
Yeah. Oh, Sue's here.
Yeah. That's what I was saying.
So I need to seat you, Sue, for Kathy.
Okay, sorry.
No, excuse me, Russ, do you want, you had already started the application, do you want to seat Sue the next application?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can ask a question.
Yeah.
So, because I came in late, so why was all this area, can somebody just tell me why was all this area disturbed down towards that area? Um, what was?
Well, it started out, John, John Cody noticed tree cutting going on. And he told them to stop, which they did. And then they did call me, and I probably shouldn't have gotten involved, but I did. Uh, and they asked me if they could cut a couple of trees down, they're dead, dead trees. Um, and I didn't know they were gonna deposit everything along the wetlands, or I would have never signed on to that. When I went out and looked, it wasn't that bad. There wasn't what Rob's describing now, but a couple of things been cleared. I, I looked at the trees they wanted to remove, that looked, looked okay to me. So I said, you know, while we're evaluating the application for the house, then I didn't have a problem with them cutting some trees down. But I didn't know it was gonna go against the wetlands. So it is what it is right now, luckily, it's not in the wetlands.
Um. So just a question, though, Russ, because I'm just trying, I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand it, so where were they clearing, trees where the house was supposed to go, or down closer between where the house and the wetlands are?
No, what, no, they didn't clear trees between where the house and the wetlands are, they cleared trees where the house site's going.
And then pushed them down towards the wetland area, then?
And then, then they, they just let things roll down the hill, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
There is an area cleared. See the fence that surrounds the cemetery?
Uh, no.
Okay, it's to the north of the property. It, it's running, it's running, uh, east-west, goes down to the corner, then heads, heads.
All those axes.
Yes.
Right, all those axes.
So where, where that fence, where that fence ends and the property line heads to the north, there's a large area in that area that's been cleared.
Along the road, Rob?
What's that?
Along the road?
No, no, down towards the wetlands.
Okay.
That's not, so just to be clear, that's not the house site, that's some, that's, yeah.
No, this is, this is down towards, you know, in that, you know, this is kind of a flag-shaped lot.
Property?
It, it is on the property.
All right.
Okay, it's down in that area that's, uh, on the, on the, uh, eastern side of the property where it widens out down at the bottom.
Brian, any, any idea why they would clear that?
Uh, not sure, unless they were just looking for some extra space for something, not sure, I, as I walked around the front, I didn't walk all the way to the back where the wetlands are.
Um, there, there's probably a hundred cedar, um, poles, you know, trees that are stacked there.
Oh, my gosh, that's a lot.
I mean, there's a lot, yeah, I mean, maybe there's fifty, I don't know, it just, it's a big pile.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure it goes back that far, but I went out to stake the original house. Uh, this plan is a little bit different, that's when they, they proposed a detached garage and a detached house. And I couldn't really stake the whole house out because front stakes were right up, almost against the, um, brush piles.
Yes.
And the back stakes were, you know, well, you know, back further than that. Now, this house, house site's been moved closer to the road. So it's, um, it's a little bit further away from the wetlands than the original plan was. Um, and also the septic and the roof drainage system is outside the hundred-foot regulated area. Um, so I.
Well, I, I think two things are going on. We have an application for a house in septic outside the regulated areas, which, which doesn't appear to be a problem. It says that there's, uh, there's not gonna be any, uh, footing drains. There's no gutters, Rob, uh, Brian?
Oh, there is, there's a roof infiltration system, it's on the, uh.
I see that.
Yeah.
So, Russ?
Yeah.
Uh, this is Wayne Care.
Yeah, hi, Wayne.
How you doing?
Good.
Um, just to, I've been listening to the whole thing, and, um, the question came up about, uh, cedars and stuff, so when we initially purchased the property, as you guys well know, this was a very congested property with a lot of cedars and thousands of vines climbing up all the cedars and killing them all. So we put the question into John Cody, and he says, yeah, cut it, cut the, cut the dead trees down and, you know, and get rid of all the, take as many as, you know, you feel needed for the vines, so it stops killing all the trees, so I needed to put the cedars somewhere. So instead of going on to and stockpiling onto the wetlands, there was concern down below on the bottom there. I measured out from where I can find some pins, and that stockpile of about sixty cedar trees is outside the regulated area. And we had permission from John Cody to put them there.
All right. But what about the trees that are against the wetland?
Those were, tho- those, I came down through there and they were, they were all dead, and I just had to lay them down to get a accessway to where I wanted to pile all the stuff out of the regulated area, and my plan was to get all of that out of there.
Okay.
But as I kept on going, it's like this place was so congested with dead trees and cedar trees and vines, and I'm like, I just couldn't keep up. You know, one thing led to another, and then we started talking about clearing for the house.
Okay.
So, but my plan is to get it all out of there, but right now is, you know, Rob, when you were there, you seen the piles and piles of debris I got there, I'm just trying to work on how to clean this out of here.
Okay.
And all of them piles right there that are right where the, the house site is, is right on the regulated area line. Most of it, I should say. I tried not to keep it in the regulated area.
But the, the trees are, that you created that access road down to where you stockpiled the cedar trees, what you're saying are outside the regulated area, which they, they could be. Um, but you went, you're right against the wetlands with all of that debris.
Yeah, like I said, when I went down through there, it was all dead trees, and I just sort of like pushed them to the side so I can actually make a, an area so I can get to the non-regulated area to pile them up. And that's when I talked to John Cody about it, and he says, yeah, just take the dead trees down, don't, and I says, I know I'm in the regulated area, but he said, try to keep it far enough away from the wetlands, so you don't go too close. I says, okay.
Uh, Russ, it's John, I'd like to clarify something on that. Um, yes, I gave permission to cut down the dead cedar trees, but as far as his statement of storing them anywhere, that was never any part of any conversation.
Okay. Well, we are where we're at, that's the fact, so what do we want to do? I think Rob's plan of putting erosion control in immediately, you know, within the next week or two, um, below all the disturbance, and then getting the stuff out of there, which was the plan anyway, um, I think we should move forward with that, otherwise we're just going in circles, and.
I, I just have a clarifying question, Russ, if I could. So, so Rob, when you walked there, can you just comment on the, the water flow pattern? You made a statement that, you know, the water's flowing from, you know?
No, I, what, what I was saying was, okay, that the property pitches from Hemlock Road towards the wetlands. Okay, in the, above the um, clear debris that's, that's stacked north to south on the, kind of below the septic area. Um, there's all pine straw in that house site, so there's no vegetation. So it just kind of appears to me like there's, you know, minor erosion headed towards the, um, wetlands at this point. So I think erosion fence protecting the wetlands would be, you know, would be a solution. The thing that I, my concern is that this wetland is, is of such importance that the buffer zone that's associated with it, I think, needs to be protected also to protect the wetlands. I mean, that's what the purpose of a buffer zone is.
Right.
You know, so, so right now that buffer zone has been compromised. I think it needs to be restored, and I think it needs to be protected, and I think that maybe markers need to be put on the hundred-foot delineation from the wetlands as a no, no-go zone.
Yeah.
And for, and for us on the phone, Julie, could we just scroll, I guess, up a little bit so we can see that buffer zone, so we're all clear on, so.
Well, there, between the red line and the wetlands, the red line is the, uh, hundred foot. That red dashed line.
Yep, got it, yeah, I just.
A hundred foot, and then you see the wetlands.
Yeah, so it goes, that hundred foot continues all the way up.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So how do we want to proceed? Um, we, we could approve this, I mean, because if anybody has a problem with the house site and what's proposed, um, we should talk about that now.
I don't have a problem with what's proposed.
Neither do I.
Neither do I, uh, so I think the best solution, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, is we could approve this with the conditions of, you know, erosion control be put in within seven days, uh, the material be removed as soon as freezing allows, and no further tree cutting, uh, happen without a permit application to this commission going forward. Everybody online with that?
I, I think that the erosion fence needs to be marked, you know, where it's gonna be installed on this map.
Well, that, that would be right along the wetlands, right, Rob?
Well, yeah, I, I, okay, so ten feet off of the, the mark, but it can't be done until that material's removed.
Yeah, we can make that a condition that no, no activity related to the construction of the house could occur until everything is removed from the buffer area. You can make that a condition.
I think now that I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about this, that maybe the erosion fence can be done in a stage, a two-stage process, because on the uh, east side of the property, wetlands, it could be, it could be installed, and then as the debris is removed against the wetlands, it could kind of be installed all the way up to the.
At the buffer, at the buffer line, where the shower, right?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, well, yes, I guess, I guess, you know, I, I just don't know how they, how you can install the erosion fence right now with all that debris there.
Well, you put it below the debris, right?
Yeah, but you might be in the wetlands at that point, I'm not sure.
Can, can you put it above? Can you do like, uh, hay bales in there, Rob, uh, above? Where, where the debris is to get something temporary up there until they can get in there to clean it out, once the ground freezes?
Possibly. You know, I mean.
We gotta decide, we gotta decide how we want this done.
I, I think, you know, it's gonna be labor-intensive, you know, handwork to install the erosion fence right at the wetlands, um, the wetlands edge.
Well, is there a reason to? Is there erosion going on there? You're, you're saying you're worried about water?
Well, when, if they're gonna have, if they're gonna have, if they're gonna have a machine that's gonna drag this stuff out of there, okay, that's gonna create, you know, track, tracks and, you know, and as you're dragging all this.
Then they can remove some of the stuff and then put the, the hay bales in, if, even if it's frozen.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I just ask, is it, is it, um, you know, uh, obvious choice on how big the equipment is that you bring in to haul this stuff out of there, is it, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of trees, so we're talking about a large vehicle of some sort, am I, so it's a tractor with a, with a trailer, and, and, you know, do, do we care?
No, it's, it, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter the type of equipment, whether it's small, big, it's gonna, it's gonna, you pulling that stuff out of there that's, that's sitting there, the ground right now is unstable, I would think.
And the path out is a single path in out, correct?
Right, I guess he already made that path, like, to cut the trees down there.
Russ?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Wayne, what I used to, to do this was a tractor with a grapple on it, and that's what I'd be using to take it back out. I don't have any big equipment, I just have a small John Deere tractor with a grapple on it.
Okay.
And what I would do then, if you're concerned. And what I would do then, if you're concerned about the silt fence, I could go behind the debris. And I'm a good forty, fifty, I know the debris is like forty or fifty feet away from the actual wetlands. I can silt fed that, and as I pull the debris out, I can just move it up.
No, it's better to put it in at the wetlands border and leave it. Mess with it. I think what Rob was saying, once you remove the debris, he wanted another line. Uh, right, Rob? But I, 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 I think the line that they're proposing for the construction is what that line should be.
Yes, during construction, but I, but I think right now, I think that that wetland should be protected as, as Wayne was saying, he could get in there and install erosion fence. So it'd be like a double, double protection of the wetlands.
Right, so you put it at the wetlands and then you put up the one that's showing on the map for the construction at the, once you're done removing the material, right? So are we ready for a motion and we can talk about conditions?
Yeah, I think so.
Agreed.
So who wants to make a motion? Kathy, you, you can, because you're, you're voting on this application.
Yeah, uh, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help with the conditions if I could.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Well, we all said that we have a problem with the house. Rob? You saw it. If there's issues you still have where you don't feel comfortable making a motion, let's hear it.
I'm just on, I, as I said, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the proposed house construction and everything. I just, I'm just a little concerned about what's going on east of the house and how it's going to be, be protected. And it's almost like I, I'm thinking that I, I would like to see this cleaned up and erosion fence put in. And, you know, maybe the.
Before, wow, you can make that a condition. Again, more conditions.
Okay, and, and also what the applicant, you know, how, how they would demarcate that hundred foot buffer zone.
It's on the board, it's on the plan.
No, I mean.
Well, again, that's the condition. But we can't get the conditions until somebody makes a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this as a regulated activity conditioned on A, uh, an erosion control consisting of silt fence or hay bales be placed along the wetland border and the debris. B, that all the debris be removed out of the upland area upon, uh, frozen ground. And that no construction of the house, the septic or any other thing uh, related to the house, including the driveway, can commence until that erosion controls in and all the debris is moved out. Then the erosion control for the construction must be installed. And at that time, they have to notify John Cody, who will go out and approve that everything is removed from the wetlands. And that the erosion control both, uh, along the wetlands and the construction are, are as planned. Another condition would be that during the, after the construction of the house, the septic, which could commence once John Cody approves it, that either a fence or post every fifty feet be placed on the buffer, uh, line to warn anybody in the future that that is a regulated area. And we've done this with many, as you know, many other places. And that a small sign be put on, you know, wet, wetlands area or buffer zone. Uh, so that people know you can't just go in and do what you want. Have I missed any conditions?
Um, I, I just wanted to add to condition A, the fencing that, um, prior to removal of the debris, that that fencing be put up at, right at the wetlands.
Right, the erosion control would have to happen first.
Right.
And the removal of the debris.
Right.
And then the calling of John Cody who approves it after you put up your erosion control for construction. Once he approves it, they could commence with construction. But part of the condition of the construction is during or after construction, either a post or fence have, and if it's post every fifty feet, have to be placed on the wetland, uh, on the, uh, buffer line as shown in this plan to warn others that it is a buffer zone and no activity could occur in that area. Are there any other conditions?
I feel good with those conditions.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm fine.
I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Megan Wayne. All right, what's next?
Okay, would you like to seat Sue now?
I'll seat Sue now. Thank you for your service, Kathy, but hang in there. Okay, this is still Sam, the last meeting. It, it's for a proposed pump house. Uh, we asked some questions. Uh, it appears they're gonna put in, uh, five tanks that'll be just under forty-eight thousand gallons a day. The commission asked that they get a hydrologist or hydrogeologist to, uh, to give us information that we would need similar, similar to what deep would need. Because over fifty thousand gallons, it's a deep permit. Under, it's the local wetlands commission's permit. Um, I got a call from Mr. Shemansky who told me he has not been able to find a hydrogeologist or, uh, uh, anybody. And so just to be upfront and transparent, I know a lot of hydrogeologists because that's what I am and that's what I do. And I did hook Paul up with BL Companies. BL Companies is a very reputable firm out of Meriden. Um, Sam Haydock, I know Sam for decades. Um, he's one of the best. And, uh, Holland and, uh, BL is now working to come up with a contract. Uh, Paul is on vacation until next Thursday. When he gets back, he will contact myself and Rob Worgen. And we will conduct a site walk with Sam and Paul, and we will go from there. So therefore they're asking for a continuance. Julia, we're at the sixty-five day mark on this?
Oh, no, not at all.
This thirty, we're thirty-five, right?
Right, we're at thirty-five, yeah.
So by next meeting, we have to make a decision or, or, or they're gonna probably have to ask for another extension. Because, uh, knowing what, uh, BL needs to do to get us the information, um, it's, it's gonna take a month or maybe two.
Um, I'll just note on, uh, Paul's letter here that the, uh, it's pertaining to this, this evening's meeting, but it's dated August fourteenth, twenty nineteen. So he got way ahead of the game on this one.
Uh, good one, good one, John. I'll have to let Paul know. I've done that before. Julie, just let him know he should, uh, submit another letter with, with the correct date on it.
I can do that.
Yeah. Um, so this will be continued.
Yeah, the parallels of cut and paste.
Okay. New business.
New business. Bill Curran, one fifty-four Keeler Road.
Yep.
Uh, what, who, does somebody here for that, Brian?
Will Curran.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here also.
And this for a house on Battle Swamp?
Yes, it is. It's in the, on the corner of, uh, Battle Swamp Road and Tunnel Road. And that's the plan that shows the, the proposal. Um, and this plan I've shown.
I'm sorry, come out a little?
Uh, zoom in a little, it's hard to. There's an existing, uh, little barn there, right?
Right, it's a little pasture area and a little barn. So, um, on the plan I've shown the two hundred foot upland review area from the Chappahag River Edge as well as the, the standard a hundred foot, um, review area from the pond with some wetlands around it that are on the property. So the house itself is, um, is outside all the upland review area as well as the driveway and well and septic tank. Nothing, it's inside the, um, review area, just a leaching field which is proposed to go next to the existing barn. It's down by the intersection of the two roads. It's an open field area. Um, we tested down that area because further up the hill is very ledgey. Uh, when you go out there and do a site inspection, you'll see the rock out crops that are pretty numerous, um, in the driveway and house side area. So I didn't even want to do tests up there because it probably wouldn't be deep enough to ledge for septic. So we went down the hill to the area next to the barn.
Okay. We'll go take a look at it, Brian?
Sure, the house, the house site is flagged out.
Okay.
Um, I didn't put flags in for the existing barn, but you can see pretty clearly the location of that, you know, based on the barn location.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have questions for Brian now? So he could be prepared for next meeting if there's something you see that there, there's no wetlands, there's the river, there's the pond. Uh, it's all ledge there.
Well, it's, uh, so wetlands just around the pond, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And then the river.
And then the river itself, there's a little water course that goes into the river.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brian.
Okay. W E O report.
John, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Um, let's look at the report. We only had nine non-regulated permits that I gave out. Nothing really crazy, just rather simple stuff. Um, on other business, we had our initial meeting. I'm trying to do some online permitting. That's gonna be coming around, but it's gonna be rather time consuming, so don't anticipate that anytime soon. But we'll eventually get there. It'll be nice, be really nice, hopefully. Uh, other thing, we go down a little bit, I did a site walk at Martinelli's about two weeks ago.
Go to page two, please.
Yeah, so I went to Martinelli for the, uh, the path they has there for his kids' quad. Um, I walked in with Jason, I found the source of the water in the middle of the field. And, um, I'm talking to him. I basically said if he stays away a hundred feet from that source in the wetlands area, he, you know, we should be, or he should be able to get that approved. Um, besides that, that's pretty much the only things that, uh, that I have going on at the moment.
All right, so Martinelli seems to be an issue because there's a lot of uh, I've heard it's a mess and then I see pictures that it's not a mess and, um, so just to be clear, Jason Martinelli put in an application to build a ATV track. And it was a circle. And when we went out and looked at it, it went through a small intermittent stream, which happens to come out of the ground. It's actually an artesian spring that blows out of the ground at about five, six, seven gallons a minute. If I, if I were Jason, I would set up a, uh, spring water company there. He should really look into it, but. Um, and that then is the start of a small intermittent water course which goes across the field. It's about in the middle of the field. And then goes across here and I went out, we looked at it. And the problem with his track is, you know, it was going through that. So he needed to put a covert in and he put an application in which showed he would put in a covert. And then when he heard there was twenty-five people who signed up for a public hearing, which is the regulation, he pulled the application. At that time, the commission said, fine, that's your right, but you're already built it basically without a, without a permit. And so you need to restore it. And, and once you restore it, we, we will lift a notice of, was there a notice violation, John? Remind me.
Uh, no, there wasn't after that.
All right, so I, we were then told by you that, um, it was restored and everything's fine.
Oh, Russ, can I just speaking out, the wetlands portion was restored. Outside of that, I didn't think that's, um, wetlands jurisdiction.
Right, but is he using the track that he put an application in for that he decided to pull?
I don't believe so.
Right. Good, so that, that all sounds like we're all on the same page. I just want to be on the same page. So Bill Horgan emailed me and asked me if he could speak tonight. Does the commission, Bill is a neighbor. He lives on Hemlock, overlooking this field that Mr. Martinelli bought, or I think his, even his mother owns it. Um, so Mr. Horgan is a neighbor who's looking down on this thing. And he's been sending a lot of emails about wetland issues and, and stuff. And we've sent John out, uh, I've sent John out numerous times. Uh, only to be reported back that he's met Jason out there. He's sent me pictures of things have grown up and the track that was there. He didn't backfill the track from what I, what I understand. Uh, because he did take all the material offsite that he dug out.
Uh, Russ, can I jump in there? No, he put the top soil back in the wetlands area. Those are the pictures where everything was growing back fine. Um, the rest of the area, he does have a stockpile of, uh, topsoil, which he's not sure what he's gonna do, but again, that's outside the regulated area.
Oh, but can we just be clear? Because we, I know we had, we talked quite a bit about this. Uh, I thought we said he was going to restore the entire track back to its original state. That that was, that was the ask and, and so now I'm hearing something different happened.
Well, it's outside the regulated area, so I did, I'll take it upon myself to say that. If it's outside the regular, the area, it's not really a wetlands concern.
Well, if, if it's, if it's in a buffer zone.
No, this was way outside of the buffer zone.
It's outside of any regulated area.
Yeah, correct.
Oh, okay, because I thought that the ask was to re- restore the entire thing and he said no problem that, and so he walked away and that was the plan. But that's not what happened, okay.
Okay, so Bill, uh, does anybody on the commission have any problem with Bill Horgan speaking? We used to have communication in the public. We got rid of it because nobody uses it. But that was an intended to prevent somebody from coming in and talk to the commission. I mean, and, and anybody, even with, with the Board of Selectmen, anybody could ask the First Selectmen to be put on the agenda, so.
I, I'm stepping down from this, Russ.
Okay, Rob.
I'm good with.
I'll, I'll see Ca- uh, Kathy for Rob on this. So Bill, you wanna, no, everybody okay? Any, any sayers? You don't want to listen to them? I vote no, no.
No, that's fine.
Okay, Bill? Are you here? You gotta unmute yourself.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Bill, you're on mute. So you, you hit the mute button. You're. We, we can't hear you, Bill. I mean, can anybody hear him?
No.
Can you unmute him?
Yeah, his mute button is on, so he's muted. Bill, you need to unmute. We can't hear you.
Okay, I keep going on and off mute. You should.
There you go. All right, go ahead, Bill.
All right, sorry.
Two minutes.
Okay, I, I'm gonna read this because it'll take a lot of this time. It's uh, it, Julie, can you uh, can you put this on the big screen?
No.
You can't?
Um, I can't.
No, you would have had to give it a.
Yeah, you're gonna actually, you can, if you physically hold it up, that's the only way.
Can you put a picture on the big screen? So.
Yeah, you have to keep it there.
Okay, but you can read that, right? All right, let me get going here. So it'll take three or four minutes to read all this. Uh, and I'm gonna just read it right here so I can give this to Julie and she can have it for the record. I wrote, site activity at seventeen Hemlock Road has occurred over the past few years. The first couple incidents, instances uh started with no known permits. Then an after the fact permit application, then a withdrawal of the application with agreement to remediate everything. And finally ATV continued uh use disregarding previous directives. I feel it necessary to summarize a list of facts for the record. And this is it. Uh, first of all, this is the can, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is, this blue is the wetlands. This up here is the new intermittent stream that came out of that pipe that looks like seventeen gallons a minute, whatever you mentioned, Russ. This red line is the regulated area. The regulated area is over two acres big. That doesn't include the green, which is the upland review area. So this is a significant wetlands with over two acres uh including the regulated area. And the regulated areas are very, very wet, high groundwater, high surface water. So let me go on reading this. Irrespective of the fact that an ATV dirt track is not a permitted use in sections four and four dash one of the Roxbury zoning regulations, multiple wetland impactful and consequential activities have taken place on the site over the past few years, right up until the present. Obviously necessitating, necessitating the attention and action of the inland wetlands commission. The related, the related facts and events related to seventeen Hemlock Road include the following for the record. A curtain drain was installed along the upper eastern edge of the site and in the regulated and upend review area, then piped directly onto the water and into a water course and onto flag wetlands, adding increased confluence to the wetlands. Um, I don't know. This is a picture of where the water just happens to come out of the ground and just lurking in this hole right here is a pipe.
Can you lift it slightly? The better. Thank you.
That's the wetlands. I mean, that's the water course. It flows down to the wetlands. You can see this is all regulated area and the regulated area has wet, has hi- high groundwater, has lots of uh wetlands vegetation, mostly those uh native rushes. And uh, so the, the regulated area is, is itself very, very, very wet. So anyway, the confluence of that pipe along with the runoff of wetlands water really adds to the uh input of water onto the wetlands. Second, a uh a significant stone wall was constructed directly crossing the wetlands on the western border property line, where they drain into adjoining wire property with vertical and lateral silt damming effect and wetlands alteration. Here's the stone wall. This stone wall was put right across the wetlands. There's another picture of the stone wall. You can see it jamming up. This is all surface water in the wetlands. There's another picture of the backed up water. You can see the stone wall. This is all because the increase and alteration of the wetlands since the uh, the uh wetlands map and A two survey was uh drawn over forty years ago. So anyway, I might add that both of these activities were not, were, were without any hydrologic considerations or permits. They just happened. Uh, then in the spring of two thousand twenty-three, a one quarter mile track was excavated and stripped with the creation of four large stockpiles of loam and no erosion control considerations for the track or the stockpile.
Bill, 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 the pipe, the pipe was put in before the track?
Oh, yeah. The pipe been there about four or five years.
Okay.
Frank Martinelli, I, he told me that to my face. So we know that water came from somewhere. It doesn't, like you say, it just doesn't come out of a spring.
Well, I, I, I thought there wasn't a pipe there. I didn't see a pipe.
No, you don't see it unless you stick a, stick up the, the dirt hole and you'll hit a pipe because all that all that water uh comes from somewhere. And you're looking east right now. This is looking east. This is the track on the upla- upland review area. This is the property stone wall to click Kim and Brian Tester. And right here is a round hole in dirt. And you know, perch water tubes and things like that don't just drain out of a round dirt hole. They come from something more substantial. So um, this is aerial photos that I took of the track. Uh, I, I took, I was flying the airplane with my knees, so I didn't have good control of the camera, but you can see that's a quarter mile track. You can see the water course coming out of here. This is all the uh regulated area. This is the uplands area all up from where the uh the wetlands are. So let me keep going. So I don't keep, I don't wanna take your time. Um, no erosion control considerations for the track or the stockpile. Number four, a forty-two year old A two survey and wetlands map is the only known public reference available for consulting these recent activities. The bulk of the site has very high surface and year-round groundwater in addition to abundant wetland vegetation within and extending well outside the regulated areas. The application for the track was in the draw and a remediation was agreed to, but the track continues to be altered and used. A um.
John, John just said that they're not using the track, that they drive their ATVs there, but they're not.
I've never been told it was being used, Russ.
Oh, yes. Uh, uh, the last time I saw it used, he arrived at the uh, with his son and the ATV. There's a big bell to the north of Frank Martinelli's house. Jason rang the bell. It's a big bell with a clanger on it. He rang it six or eight times, jumped in the ATV, drove down the hill, roared back and forth. I have pictures of most of this, videos, back and forth with his son, then drove back up the hill, rang the bell again and drove off. That's one time. Uh, a neighbor who will remain nameless right now took pictures, videos about four weeks ago of him using the track. So um you know, that's um I don't know what to say. I just didn't do anything. I tried to take pictures and uh, so the track has been used and I took pictures now and I don't know how to get this, these pictures to you off my phone. But the track has brand new ruts in it. I'm not home all the time. The track has brand new ruts in it. And uh, you know, a uh, a dirt ATV track act, or a dirt track with ATV activity becomes basically a purposeful mud track with silt runoff accompanying a high groundwater or surface water and with any significant precipitation. Whereas uh a legal petition of concerned Roxbury residents to deny track use and remediate the site remains open. Here it is. If we, a legal document. Uh, my name is not on this, by the way.
Sorry, Bill, could you, could you repeat? What, what is that document?
That's a petition by Roxbury residents, taxpayers in Roxbury, residents of Roxbury to, to, to deny a ATV track. And it calls for uh immediate stabilization, remediation, um a minimum of regrading track to original level in, in addition to seeding and having all disturbed areas. That's what the petition called for. Uh, let's see, uh the water course creation output from just the installed curtain drain has increased the wetlands and regulated area. Add to that the dam of, of the stone wall. Those, that forty-two year old map of wetlands is obsolete now because the wetlands, the flow and the vegetation is I'm certain the wetlands haven't shrunk. They've only gotten larger. Uh, the combined, the combined, uh, let's see, wetlands and, the wetlands considerations include a one hundred foot omnidirectional regulated area plus upland review area. The combined flagged areas and wet, right, wet, I say not wetland, the combined flagged wetlands and wet regulated area total over two acres, mo- which almost cuts the site in two. Something irrelevant. Irrelevant, but worthy of note because the subject was mentioned at a previous meeting. This site merged. Uh, it was said at a previous meeting that this was an approved building lot. But um the site was merged with the main parcel of seventeen Hemlock Road and recorded on September seventh, two thousand sixteen, volume one twenty-three, page six seventeen, and is not an existing or approved building lot. The entire site is complex, has significant wetland water course issues with extensive wetland vegetation, surface water, high groundwater extending well beyond the hundred foot regulated area. This documented list of facts supporting maps and photographs can be submitted for your reference and review. Thank you for your time and I hope that you find helpful the uh documentary information I've listed above. Sorry to race through it like that, but I don't wanna take your time. This is a mess back there. It's a real mess. And I listened to you talk about you know, regulated areas or view areas and some cedar trees. I mean, this.
All right, okay.
I look at this, I look at this, I look at this every day.
You know, what you're saying is he, he has other areas on the property he could drive his ATVs. It's, he shouldn't be driving it where, where these wetlands are.
You're, you're absolutely right, Russ, but technically.
What you're saying is there's pipes been put in with no permits in the past. And.
How big stone wall damming up the whole wetland?
Curtain drain. I mean, those are a bunch of things that seemed.
Right, so.
I don't want, this is a gray area, but it is a fact. It's a fact that uh if you read this is not a zoning meeting. This is a wetlands meeting, but it's a zoning issue too because there are regulations, section one, three point eight, one, three point thirteen.
That, that's zoning. We, we, we got a, we still got a lot to go on our agenda. I don't wanna.
Yes, but.
Get into minutia. What, what, what I'm, what I'm asking is the way that our, our wetland enforcement officer should go out there. It shouldn't be the commission investigating this. And anybody could speak up and tell me if I'm right or wrong or if you agree, but it shouldn't be the commission investigating this. That's why we have a wetlands enforcement officer. He should be provided all this information. He should get a meeting with the app, with uh, with the Martinellis. And this should be discussed. And if the wetland enforcement officer feels that there has been violations, that the spirit of him pulling the permit and saying he would restore uh, that that's been done, which is what we, what we assume, what we were told. Right. I thought this was all behind me. So I, I.
But, but, but Russ, isn't that the point?
What do you wanna do? What's your next step?
But Bill, isn't that the point? I'm, I'm sorry, Russ, isn't that the point that Bill's raising that this has already come to wetlands? There was an issue. He was to resolve it and the enforcement officer was supposed to check on it. But here we are months later and there's still really big problems.
Well, there's, there's a difference of opinion. The enforcement officer doesn't see big problems.
Uh, excuse me. I think I should be able to speak here for a moment for one. I don't think this is the right form for any stock talking in this aspect. But most importantly, if I was told or made advise that he was riding in there, I'd be there in a minute. So uh, if I don't know something, it's hard to act. As far as the remediation plan, I, I, I stand sound on my, what I did there. It's outside the buffer zone, not really in the wetlands jurisdiction. Bill even told me he didn't have a problem with the dirt pile there, so um. Yeah, whatever you guys wanna do. I have no problem, no fear of anything like that, so let's go.
Isn't the buffer zone synonymous with the, the wetlands, the regulated area? Is that what you're doing? You're mixing?
Uh, Bill, when I was there with you, a student on your property, you were talking about the pile of topsoil and you told me to my face like you're staring right now, you have no problem with that. So I assumed you had no problem with it. I went with that.
I, I did say that I was.
Thank you.
That was before he came back and rode and that was.
Well, Bill, once again, you never told me he came back and rode, did you?
Uh, maybe, maybe what we should do, John, is send Jason a letter or call him.
Oh, I'll call him tonight, tomorrow morning. I don't mind.
And make sure he knows he cannot ride back there. It's, it's not, he can't go up against the wall and say it's, I'm out of the right, he's not. It's like Bill said, I think the property's divided in half by that stream.
Well, according to the map that we have was the only actual evidence we do have is the A two survey, which is what I went off. I can't go off a, a, a Crayola drawing, can I?
I think that we've had too much back and forth on this. This is way too much issue back and forth. I'm gonna speak up and say this that I think that he's telling us he's like fixing something and he's not doing there, anything there anymore. And then we find out that he is. And I think we need to have this property really defined of what it is. Cause there's a spring in there and there's wetlands in there. And I think there's too much, I'm gonna say it, too much back and forth and we need to have this. Actually, we should have him have what? A soil scientist go in there and say, where are your wetlands? Because I think there's too much back and forth. And, and, you know, do you have wetlands there or not? Cause I think his, his attitude, I'm gonna say it, is it's his property and he wants to do with it what he wants to do with it. And I think that we're going back and forth trying to determine where's our wetlands, where there's not wetlands, where does he have a right to like have a, a run ATV on his property. And this needs to bring somebody in there, a professional and tell us where he could have, do what he wants to do on his property.
Hey, John, I have a question for you. John, John Cody, when was the last time you were on the property?
Let me just answer soon. Here's the problem. We can't force him to flag wetlands. He pulled his application. We got reports from the W E O. It was all set and we dropped it. That's where we're at legally. I'm thinking legal, cause I've been in court with stuff like this and I know how the courts view these things. We have to be careful about what our jurisdiction is and what our rights are and what are his rights are. So if he's not riding in that field, we have no uh authority to say to him, go have a flag. We wanna know where the wetlands are. Because we've already told him it was restored to our satisfaction. He's already been told that. Uh, and the pictures that John sent bear that out in my mind. I, I thought having him put all the dirt back would be bigger mess than just letting everything grow back. And that's what's happened from what I, last time I looked at it. So we can't just say, Jason, go get a soil scientist because he doesn't have to, because he doesn't have an application before us. On the other hand, if there's a violation, then the commission has to issue a notice of violation. And we, we could direct our W E O to issue a notice of violation. But up until this point, the W E O hasn't seen violations for him to issue it. So we're, we're going against the person we trust, the, uh, what his decisions are. And it's hard for a W E O and I, I know. Because you gotta make a call and when sometimes you make a call and the commission doesn't agree with it, it's kinda like, well, fine, then tell me to issue the NOV and I'll issue it. So what's the notice of violation? I I mean, what he, you know, what, what should the notice of violation be? What's the violation?
Hey, hey, Russ, can, Russ, can I say something here?
Yeah.
So here we have a complaint tonight from a neighbor. I think. John, I don't know when the last time you were out there to have a look at this, but I think you need to contact Jason and go have a look and then report back.
Well, from my understanding, John, you did that, right? You met him out there.
Yeah, I was out there, uh, let's call it. Uh, shy of three weeks ago, something like that, uh, doing change. Uh, but may I suggest what I'll do tomorrow? I'll, I'll call him. I'll tell him that he's not allowed to ride in that property. If he does, we can issue the NOV right off the get go. And start this.
Well, NOV for what?
If he rides in there. I'm going to tell him, no, he can't ride in there.
That's what I think should happen. He should be warned that he cannot ride ATVs on that field. If he wants to, he needs an application.
Yeah, that's, we can do that easy.
And I just want to be sure I'm clear. When we say he can't ride. Does that mean near the wetlands, on the wetlands, on the property?
I'm just going to leave it gray. I'm just going to say nowhere. Just don't ride in that area. So that way, if he does, we can take Bill's colorful map and use that or. Or do something.
Put it, cause you.
But that, we're keep, we're going to be back at square one though. That's what I don't understand.
Well, no, we actually have a case to go forward with.
So why, can't we just say no riding on the property?
That's what we'll do. We'll say no riding in the property.
Okay.
And then if he does do that, now we have reason to issue an NOV.
Well, but let's phrase that because we've got to be careful.
Yeah.
No writing on the property unless.
In the wetlands area. Yeah, yeah, I understand.
He, he could write on the property if he applies for a permit.
Mm-hmm.
Now, he could come back and say it's a, I have an exemption. I, I could ride ATVs anywhere I want because it's a residential use. But, but it's not an approved building lot. So there's nobody living there. That's my opinion.
May I say something?
There, there's a spring there. It's a wetland. I don't see anywhere how he could ride on that property without being within a hundred feet. I don't get it. But you should just. Stay away from it. He's got plenty of room on the rest of the lot to ride his ATV. That's the bottom line. We're not, right. We're, we're protecting wetlands. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I could phrase it that way, sure.
And what, what's the rest of the lot? I'm sorry, Russ, I'm not clear.
The, it's a huge lot. It used to be two lots. They merged it. The rest of the lot is all upland.
Does everyone on this call understand where he can and can't ride?
Well, he can't ride within a hundred feet of any wetland or water course.
I'm kind of with you, Kathy. I think it keeps going back and forth.
Yeah, I, I heard he can't ride on the property and then, and then it's, uh, in some area he can ride.
I, I, this thing splits that property in half. The other half.
I think it's a little unclear right now because we don't have a map in front of us to, to show it, Kathy.
Well, there is a map. Bill has it. Bill, show your map.
All right, here's the map. This is west down here. This is the flagged wetlands of forty-two years ago. Remember now this stone wall is a dam. The wetlands have probably expanded. But this red line is a hundred feet. Around the wetland flag and the water course.
So technically he does have a way around it if he stays to the top of the map. And he could ride anywhere he wants except for the regulated area. And that's.
Up here is where the curtain, up here is where the curtain drain is. Buried.
Curtain drain.
The curtain drain is what was put in, what I sold from Frank Martinelli, the father. He put that in to dry out the upland area. So he could get a prime. What's that?
Where does the curtain drain outlet?
The curtain drain outlets, outlets right at that round hole in the dirt, right here.
Oh, so you think that's not a spring? That's a, that's a curtain drain discharge?
That's a curtain drain that Frank Martinelli told me he put in.
I thought it was a spring because it's blowing out of the ground.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a big curtain drain teed into that pipe.
Well, he created the wetland.
Well, he didn't create the wetlands. He created a water course.
Yeah, he created the wetland.
But, but these little vegetation symbols, it's wetlands rushes. They're all over the place, all the way down to Kim and Brian's property, way to the north. That whole piece of property is just plain wet. With high groundwater.
Who do we get it flagged so that it's really clear to him and all of them?
Do it, Kathy. We don't have a legal authority to force him.
Okay, to flag wetlands?
We can say to him, you need.
I think you have.
You need.
You have damaged wetlands.
ATV, hold on, Bill, I got it. We need to stay off that field with an ATV unless you apply. And show us. Where the wetlands are so you know, so you don't drive anywhere within a hundred feet. And it's not a residential exemption because it has the potential to, to significantly impact wetlands.
That's correct, Russ.
Him ride in there, then we have nothing. He's got a right to his property. Can't build anything without a permit. He could walk on it, could ride a bike on it. But he can't be riding motorized vehicles through wetlands. So I, I think John, you should have a conversation with him. The commission does want to work with him. We don't want to get into a big bruhah. Um, trust me. Um, but we, we. Volunteer our time for this and i- if we don't stand up for. Why we're here, then why are we here? That's how I feel. And I can't sit here. And let him ride around on an ATV knowing he, he's. Not only impacting that intermittent stream, but he's impacting the wetlands. Below. Now again, he built a wall without a permit. But it's, it's too far gone to go after him about that.
So Russ, could I just, um, ask a question? You know, I, I've heard a couple of times. Throughout the evening, not, not specific to this or, you know, you know, specifically, but just where, um, conversations get, um. Told different ways, right? People hear different things from a conversation. Could we possibly, um, put it in writing what it is we're. We're, we're asking of him just so it's really clear and he can't come back and say that's not what, what was said?
Good idea, Kathy. I will write a paragraph or two. And. At the next meeting, or we could have a special five minute meeting. The commission could approve that. And then we could give that to John and John could request a meeting and he could hand him the letter in person.
Russ, I could draft one tomorrow and send one out. That's no big deal.
All right. I don't want to.
No, simple.
I don't want to give him the heads up because I, I, I know, I know him. And if we, if we do it in a way where he's blindsided. It, it, it's not going to be, it's not going to be friendly from there on in.
I agree.
At least if we try to talk to him one on one. I'm even thinking that Pat Roy should have a meeting with you, Bill. And the other neighbor and him and you talk about this. But then again, even if you have a meeting with Pat Roy to talk about it. It doesn't change the wetland situation. We cannot have him writing on that property because there are wetlands on that property. And if he wants to clarify where the wetlands are and where the wetlands aren't. Then we welcome him to have a soil scientist flag it. And stake it, and then he could ride anywhere with, as long as he's a hundred feet away from that staked area. And that's a fair compromise for anybody who's reasonable. Unless you're a libertarian and you believe it's your property and you should be able to do what you want. Keep the government off my back. Unfortunately, I don't write the regs and the regs are what the regs are. And they apply to everybody, no matter what you believe. Right? I think that's the solution. If somebody else. Has a better one or wants to add to that, please.
In the meantime, there's a lot.
Wait, Sierra?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Sierra.
I was just wondering if the letter came from John Cody, wouldn't that be friendlier?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I think it should come from the commission. It's not John having this conversation. It's us.
Okay, sorry. Didn't mean to.
When John, John gets drafted, give it to me and I'll, I'll, I'll make it all nice and.
Yeah, I'll draft one tomorrow, Russ, and send it to you for a once all.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Start on that. All right, good. All right, what's next? Julie? Did we lose Julie?
No, she's there. We just can't hear her.
Oh, okay. I think you're muted, maybe?
Julie, you're there, but we can't hear you.
Darn Zoom.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
We are.
Okay. The wonders of Zoom. I had to mute myself and unmute myself so you could hear me. All right, let's move on. Let me get this shared again. Um, okay, so. We are looking at, um, the Westcog report summary that Kathy put together. Let me get down to that.
I don't know. Kathy, Kathy did a great thing and, and summarized the Westcog wetland recommendation. For the future report. And Kathy also has a good idea of let's just discuss one or two things a meeting. Cause there's no hurry on this and we're running late. For those who haven't eaten yet. Right, Julie? Is that what this is?
That's what you're looking at right now.
No, we're looking at the planning commission annual report.
Ah, I didn't do it. Let me stop and reshare. I love Zoom. Let me stop this.
It's not coming through?
Not coming through.
All right. Kathy, do you remember the first item on there?
Yeah, I have it up here. Hold on one sec. Um, the first was, there's two sections.
Why don't you share your screen? Could you get it on your computer and share it or not?
I think so. Let me see. See what I got. I think I. You got it?
There you go.
There you go. Now you can see it.
So as you all could see, Kathy did an awesome job. And, um, and she's suggesting we do certain ones during certain meetings. Uh, so we'll, we'll talk about enforcement first, which is a. Which is a mess in Connecticut right now, if you ask me. I like, I like the idea of having. Corrective action fees already in a schedule. So they don't have to go to court and it's all. Established. And I like the idea of a statewide uniform fee. So everybody has the same fee. Does anybody have any comments on that?
No, I think that that's a good idea.
That is a good idea.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm thinking when I read these, Russ, it's, it's, um, I agree. There, it's a good idea. That the second one is, is. More of an action on the state. I mean, the state's got a kind of. All we can do is encourage it and, and they've got to define, um, the recommendation on what this uniform fee schedule might look like. So, you know, from our perspective, I think. The question is on number one. Do we, um. Have a fee schedule that is, um. Easily accessible by, by our, by, by the town, you know, can you just go to the website and easily look at? Whatever the corrective action fee schedule is for Roxbury.
Well, the recommendation of the state, and I agree, and the state. Needs to get more involved. I think I, I commend Westcog for bringing all this up because there does need to be, be changed. Um, so that, that's something down the road. I mean, for now, this commission supports that, right?
Well, I think the second one is state. The first one is municipal.
You're right. The first one's us. All right.
Well, I, okay, can I say something here? It's almost like you have to do number two before you could do number one. If you're going to have a uniform.
Yeah, right. Why, why, why do your own? And then the state comes out with theirs that everybody has to adopt.
But what if they never come up with one? Or what if it's ten years from now? I mean, you know, I mean, there is that risk.
Well, that's what the, I think they're giving you that option that that there's a risk. So if the state doesn't do it, you could do it.
Yeah, and that's in the literature. If you, you know, further in the body of the context, it does say municipalities are. Um, empowered with creating their own fee schedule. And then I suppose, you know, I don't, I don't know how you change a municipal fee schedule for wetlands. Is it just within the committee? I, you know, I don't know exactly how that works.
Yeah, you, you do that. You make the recommendations. You've got, got to go to the state for approval and then. Then you could change the regulation or add, add to the regulation. Gil would help us with that. I'm, I'm looking at us and I'm saying our three hundred fifty dollar after the fact fee covers almost everything that's. That's not major. I think we have that.
Yeah, I agree.
But is that enough of a deterrent for people? Not doing what they're supposed to do, a three hundred and fifty dollar penalty?
These days, probably not.
Well, our, our, our mission has always been somebody gets served an NOV. They come in, they agree they made a mistake, they'll fix it. And, and they pay three hundred fifty dollars. I don't want to punish people who make mistakes. Then there's the other kind who, who go in and do what they want. They block streams, for example. And then. Uh, you could find them up to a thousand in the existing municipal ordinance without having a court. But if you go over that, you have to go to court. And that's the problem with enforcement in Connecticut. Is we're the only state where it goes to court. Every other state goes to the state. Yeah, you, you have an argument over science. It goes to experts that the state hires. In my opinion, the state isn't living up to its responsibility for the protection of wetlands. It's downloaded it all to the municipalities. It continues to have unfunded mandates on municipal wetlands. For example. The next one there, municipal wetlands training. They, they put all kinds of new things into the law that municipalities have to pay for. And it's not fair. So our, our red, our legislators. Really need to step it up and the state needs to step up and start doing their part. Cause up until now, it's only been the municipalities doing it. The state has done very little. They have two people working in the wetland office. And if you call them, they don't call you back. At least they haven't called me back when we had issues with, uh, intermittent stream. So. I, I like the idea. I think, uh, you know, if we draft a response to the Westcog. It really is, yeah, we agree with this and this is what we're doing. Right?
Well, I think to Rob's point on the first one where it says reduce wetland violations, right? So we're trying to, you know. To affect behaviors with our fee. So we're trying to, you know, to affect behaviors with our fee schedule. So one, i- is, is the, is the fee structure clear to the residents here? And two, does it, does it drive the behavior that we want it to drive?
Well, I think it is clear to everybody that our wetland commission is very serious about what we do, we find, we have a history of that. But for the people who violate, they're gonna do it no matter what, and those are the ones you gotta, you gotta hit with.
And shut the door.
Oops, Sierra, you're on, you're not on mute.
Somebody needs to mute, I think they're yelling at their kids. Alright. Do we want to say anymore on that? The next one on training is, it just bothers me. Um, you know, they, give people more training, that solves all problems. No, people are volunteers. Uh, the eight hour training that they have now, just make that mandatory, make that where you have to do it within, within a year of getting put on a commission. If you're not willing to do that, then you're not, you're not going to take the time to really learn what the commission's all about. Now, the 40 hour Army Corps, that's a pretty serious course. And I think requiring it, you know, I think it shouldn't be required, it should be, uh, and, you know, get people to do it, right? But not require it, nobody's gonna want to be on a commission.
But, but are they referring to a, a, a wetland agent, is that a commission member or is that a wetlands enforcement?
No, that, that would be John, uh, that's true, that's a good point, I didn't read that. Yeah, I think John should take the 40 hour training course, I'm all for that.
I think what they're saying.
I thought it meant all, all commission members, that's what I have a problem with.
No, they're, they're encouraged, um, to establish a minimum wetlands training for all commission members. As a condition of appointment to their post.
Yeah, so I guess we agree with all of that, right?
So to, to, I, I'm, I'm not sure honestly, uh, Russ, what is, you know, required for, for us and for, for, you know, wetlands enforcement. Um, you know, I, I don't have, so, so I guess my, my main point is what do we require, are we happy with that, do we want something more or less?
Well, they, they don't require, they, they require one person of the commission and the wetland enforcement officer to take the deep training. And I, I think it should be all members of a commission should take the deep training. I, that, it's not asking for much, really. I, I would have a problem if they started making people doing 40 hour training and, you know, they get crazy with this stuff.
Yeah, I, I agree, because you, you start to walk that line of losing volunteers, this is just too much. But I think this is really just about us and not so much the state's gonna do what the state's gonna do, but for us in Roxbury, what is the requirement, are we happy with it, do we want to affect it?
Well, I am.
Do, do we have a full commission right now?
Yeah, uh, we're short one member because Mark resigned.
Okay, do we have people in line waiting to be on this commission?
No.
Okay. So I think the more we require the.
There, there are people who, who want to be on the commission, but they're not the right people.
Okay.
Well, even the report, it says there aren't as many people interested in volunteering on one hand, but then on the other hand, you know, it wants to put all these extra, you know, 40 hours of training on, so it was a little.
Rob corrected me, that's just of the, uh, W L E O trainer. That would be only John, that would pertain to only wetland enforcement officers.
Yeah, he, he's the wetlands agent versus it, down below it says commission member, yeah.
Right, so for members, all I'm saying is.
I misread it.
So expand the role of professionally trained inland wetland agent to assume greater responsibility for minor and so-called moderate wetland impact applications. Basically, we do that, but the law says a wetland agent cannot approve anything in a buffer area that ha- has even a, ev- any potential of impacting a wetland. That has to go to a commission. What they're saying is expand that role, so he doesn't have to make people go to a commission, even if there is a potential to impact. If they take the actions that that agent requires, such as silk fences and stuff like that. I do agree with that. I, and I, I think there's a lot of support in the state for, uh, professionally trained inland wetland agents to, to have more, uh, say in decisions and less goes to the commission. So what they're saying is the difficult stuff should go to the commission, but to make it easier for a commission, keep all that other stuff o- out of it. And I kind of agree with that.
Yeah, so, so Russ, could I just go back to number three and, and I'm sorry, I, I just is there a requirement for our town around, um, training for the agent? I, I just, is it stated somewhere, is it in the?
Yes, there's a state requirement that any wetland enforcement officer has to take the deep training.
And that's once in their career, is that correct?
That's once in your career, you get the certificate, you're good to go.
And once you take that, you become what they're referring to here as professionally trained?
No, because that's not professional training, professional training would be the 40 hour training program.
I, uh.
If I could jump in there for one second to be a certified zoning and wetlands officer, I have to take the CASIO class, which is, uh, through Central Connecticut. And then you have to maintain your credits through them, which is 12.
That's all zoning, John, none of that.
But it's intermingled because they do a lot of wetland stuff also.
Well, they do, but it's not required for WEO, which I am, and I didn't have to go through that because I'm not involved with zoning.
Oh, you're lucky there.
Yeah.
So, so I, the only point I'm trying to raise, Russ, is for the, for Roxbury, do we have clear requirements around the agent and the members and what our training should be?
It's the state requirements.
So we are aligned with whatever the state requires and and we want to just keep, we, we're happy with that and we'll just keep that requirement. Now, ca- ca- it, that requirement is, I guess it's on the state website and we could go pull that just so it's it's clear.
It's on the state, it's on deep web, wetland website, all that. Including the course.
Okay.
So professionally trained inland wetlands agent would be somebody who got the 40 hour training. And if they did, then the town even without the state could allow that person greater, no, actually not. Because the state regs don't allow a WEO to, to, uh, approve things that have a potential for impact. That has to go to a commission right now. I don't agree with number five, I think the legislators, I, look what they've done to firemen and stuff, it's, it's, it's just made it where everybody's got to get paid to be on a commission.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, same here.
Meeting management training to all inland wetland commission members. Meeting management, meaning, uh, uh, we're all trained on it.
Oh, we can, could I just make a comment on number five? I, I guess for that, I completely agree, I wouldn't, um, it just says encourage minimum wetlands training. I would, I, I, I I guess my thinking is like, training is good, if you have time for it, great, right? So, just, and I know Julie's, uh, I had a conversation with her and there's, there is, you know, Connecticut, the state has a website where you can access their latest training. So my thinking was just like awareness for this committee that this website exists and you can go get more training.
Well, how many, how many people on the committee have the certification? All of us.
I don't, I don't.
Who doesn't?
Rob.
Kathy.
Only two, and it's up to you, you can do it if you want, if you don't want to do it, right now, that's what it is.
My, mine's been several years now.
But you only need to get it once.
Yeah, my.
When I was in Brookfield.
Doesn't matter. I mean, I, I took the older one and then when they came out with this new one a year ago, I took that. It's, it's interesting, why not?
Right, yeah, I just haven't done it, so.
It's on my to-do list.
Alright, let's move on because it's getting late, we'll.
This is, yeah, number six is.
We'll just do three because six is, we'll be here to 10 o'clock.
No, I think so, if today was just one through, so can we just do this number six and we're done? For tonight, that was the recommendation, yeah.
Oh, oh, one through six, okay, I thought you meant six of the things, yeah, yeah, we're done then, right?
Well, for, so the meeting management training, I think, I, I don't know where to go get that, I, I, I would like to get that.
The town, I've talked to Pat Roy, the town has to provide that. And I guess they provided it to some members of zoning because everybody on a commission. And for some reason, what, we weren't included. I don't know if it was an oversight, I don't, maybe they didn't have the training and, and I think they did, I don't know.
Excuse me, if I can interject.
Yeah.
That what I sent Kathy was from Yukon Clear for land use training. Um, and they actually have three classes that they ran last February. And the second one, um, is on, has, um, how to run a meeting.
Okay.
And it has a ton of policy in there and how to run a meeting and things you can and can't do. So, um, it's 90 minutes, if you want to watch it, feel free. And I know it's very similar.
Required, Julie?
It is for, it is. It is for, um, the land use members, volunteers, and we all have to get certified. Um, to do a minimum of four hours of training. Um, and that's planning, ZBA and zoning, it does not include wetlands.
Oh, lucky us.
Lucky you guys, yeah, um, but it is, but it is in the training package that they put out for the other commission members. And it's the second class and it has meeting management, it is actually, I found it very valuable.
Uh, Russ, also CCM offers courses in that as well.
Julie, can, did you say you sent us that link or no?
I actually, um, Kathy and I were talking about it and I shared it with her. But I can send it to everyone if you have an interest.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I can do that.
To me, meeting management is very easy, you just need control of that mute button. No, I need serious training on that.
And alright, I have a dog's birthday to celebrate, so. You gotta go. So I, I just have one comment, which is you'll see that I didn't include December at all for, um, kind of going through this list. Um, I'm actually away in December, I can't attend the December meeting, I, I will be out, so I have it picking up again in January.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Look, we might put it off till then. Till January, we'll see how December looks. Sometimes we don't even have a meeting in December because we, not, not much comes in, so we'll see. Alright, so I look for an adjournment motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Go on favor, ah.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.